Good morning, everyone. Welcome. It's nice to see everybody this morning. I'll call the meeting to order at 9:00 AM sharp, and I will ask everyone to stand for the singing of our National Anthem. Lovely anthem. So, welcome again, everybody. I think that winter is officially here now. I know that a winter solstice is not for a few more weeks, but the snow is upon us and the cold weather is here. I'm enjoying it. I don't know how everyone else feels, but it's nice to see the snow. We have the parade coming up this weekend, so it'll be fantastic. Are there any additions to the agenda this morning?
Madam Mayor, we have no additions and no deletions from the administration.
Thank you. Any from council? None? Is there a member of council that would like to adopt the agenda for the November 27, 2024 Regular Meeting of Council Minutes? Counselor Kamana, thank you very much. All in favor? That is carried. Any corrections or amendments to November 13, 2024 Regular Meeting of Council Minutes? Is there a member of council that would like to adopt the November 13, 2024 Regular Meeting of Council Minutes? Counselor Clark, thank you very much. All in favor? That is carried. Do you see how I'm just looking this way automatically today? My neck is very sore, though. So, before we jump into delegations this morning, we're going to do a little fun little challenge this morning. So, the Town of Drayton Valley Administration and Council is thrilled to be participating in this year's SOS campaign and the Give the Shirt Off Your Back Challenge that was put on by the Drayton Valley Community Learning Association. So, today we are stepping up, we are accepting the challenge, and then we are asking the Drayton Valley Thunder to do the same with us. So, thank you for nominating us and asking us to be part of this this morning. So, I think what we're going to do is we're going to get a picture, we're going to take the shirt off our back, and we're going to put the challenge to the Thunder this morning. You got socks. That's good. Oh, do you want me to? Okay. I can say something, too. I'll just say something a little bit. Okay, okay. Yeah. You don't have confidence that I would memorize that? I'm going to read this, and then I'm going to say, "Challenge on." Will I throw it up? Hello, Drayton Valley. Counselors, this year's SOS campaign and Give the Shirt Off Your Back Challenge. I want to say thank you to Drayton Valley Community Learning Association for challenging us. We also want to be challenging the Drayton Valley Thunder this year. Challenge on! Well, that was fun. That's always a nice way to get involved in the community, and what a great cause that they're doing this for. I believe when they had put the challenge on to us, it was to donate gently-used sweaters and new socks for the campaign. So, they had challenged the Town of Drayton Valley and Brazos County. So, I'm hoping Brazos County had accepted the challenge as well, and I'm hoping that we can get the news out to Thunder that we've challenged them. And I know that the deadline is approaching next week, so if we could let them know that we've challenged them, and we're hoping to see them do the same. Next up this morning, we have our delegations. Our first delegation is Mark Baker. At this year's Mayor's Gala that was celebrated just a couple months ago, we had the opportunity to highlight individuals, businesses, and organizations in the community that go above and beyond and stand out. And this year, one of the new categories that we had put up in the Mayor's Gala was the oil and gas industry. And we had three nominees come forward, and one of them was Mark Baker. So, Mark Baker is here joining us this morning. He is the owner of Western Solutions 2000. He's been a vital part of the Drayton Valley oil and gas industry since 2000. He is known for his dedication to both his employees and the community. Mark goes above and beyond to support his team and contribute to local causes. His company has worked with many major oil and gas businesses in the area, and he's a regular donor to charitable events and silent auctions in Drayton Valley. Mark's generosity and commitment to giving back make him a valued member of the community. So, congratulations, Mark. Thank you for coming this morning. We'd like to present you with this little plaque and get a picture with you. Come on down, everyone. Congratulations. Thanks for coming this morning. It's always nice to recognize people in the community for going above and beyond and standing up. Thank you. Congratulations, again. Whereabouts is your business located? Okay, yeah, nice.
It's been a rough COVID. We have our ups and downs, right?
Yeah, right, yeah.
But I came here when I was younger, so I'm down for a long time. I worked for Bob Hill for 12 years prior, Gillo Field a little prior to that. So, I go way back here.
Well, yeah, congratulations for 24 years in the community, and yeah, it's definitely had its ups and downs.
Definitely, yeah, straight home.
Yeah, well, we're grateful you're here. And I don't know, Mark, if you had the opportunity, but this year we mixed it up a little bit for the Mayor's Gala, and all of the nominees were recipients of the Mayor's Gala, so we wanted to celebrate all of them, and we'd put the banners up downtown. Yeah, so your name was up there as well, so. Yeah, 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 so congratulations. Yeah, absolutely. Nice, nice. Well, thank you for coming this morning. Our second delegation this morning is Drake's Handy Bus, and they are presenting their financial report this morning to us. So, if you want to come to the podium, please, ladies. Good morning. Go ahead.
Yeah, green light's on.
Welcome.
Do you want us to yell at you, or what, Tom?
We actually don't need the mic for yous to yelling. No, just.
You'll have to put our financials up because we didn't bring our own set, so. Well, I see them going by, yeah. I'm not looking for a year. I sent you a spreadsheet with our request. That's what I'm looking for. This sheet, this sheet here, can you, does everybody have a copy in their folder? Okay, so basically, what, this is some background data. Basically, what we're asking for is really three-year funding to go from $15,000 to $20,000 to get back up to $25,000. We've made some increases in wages to be competitive in the bus-driving market. Right now, our main driver is Sam Hill, and Sam Hill ran Sam Hill Bussing and sold out to Prairie, so she's now in a kind of in flux between the school bus market and working in our market. And with that happening, it's created opportunity, because the reason this has worked to date with the funding that we've had to date is because she used bus drivers that weren't busy at other projects to man the bus and provide the service. But the fact that she's not working at all for anyone else right now has changed the game in our favor because she's able to do, she can schedule it farther ahead, and she can do more trips. As you know, if we had to hire a full-time driver, the $25,000 a year wouldn't cover, wouldn't even cover a full-time driver. So, yes, we have some money in the bank. A portion of it's been donated, and some of it's leftover money from the two years of COVID when we weren't busy. Fundamentally, if you guys can, I can't read it from here, but fundamentally, what Amy and I are asking for is three-year funding, $15,000, then $20,000, then $25,000 over the next three years.
So, that was $15,000 over the next three years?
No, $15,000 year one for 2025, and then $20,000 for 2026, and $20,000 and $30,000, not 25, $15,000, $20,000, and $25,000 over the next three years.
So, $15,000, $20,000, and then $25,000?
Over the next three years.
Over the next three years.
And of course, right now, it's contract time, right? Because we'll be renewing the contract for 2025 within the next couple of weeks, I suspect. So, I'm hoping.
Do you want us to ask questions, or did you have a little bit more to? Nope. Okay, then we're going to jump right in and ask you questions, then.
All right.
Mr. Vincent?
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm pleased to inform council that we have made provisions in the 2025 budget which would cover the request that is being made this morning, and we'll be dealing with budget, of course, tomorrow. So, you're welcome back to the chambers to listen to the exciting discussion on budget, but very pleased to report that. So, we'll be able to deal with that request quite easily, and we'll do that tomorrow.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for that. Any questions this morning? I am going to just ask a few, then. Okay, so with this, then, so the ask has been for three years. Was the, is the county involved? Brazos County involved in any of this? Has a request gone to them?
Do we need, do we need to go down that road?
Yeah, right? Yeah. Would you like to ask to advocate on your behalf? Next question.
There's an election coming in the fall, right?
Yes, well, thank you. Thank you for that. So, you've asked for the three years. Mr. Vincent has informed you that we're beginning our budget deliberations tomorrow. It is included in budget discussions. I have a, I'm having a hard time talking this morning. Budget discussions, which is really good to hear, so we'll be deciding on projects like that. So, with this, you're saying that Ms. Sam Hill now is able to drive more. How many days a week are, is Drake's out and about in the community being used?
You know what? Sam's, Sam would take any booking at any time.
Okay.
Because she's available, and she also has, I mean, the reason this has worked all this time is because of her access to school bus drivers. So, if she's tied up, she just gets a driver, and she'll do 24/7, because there's lots of days she has to leave Drayton at 5:00 in the morning to get somebody to an 8 o'clock appointment on the far side of the city, like the Gray Nuns Hospital.
Yeah.
So, she's, she's up the game a lot because she's available full-time now.
Wow.
As far as transport. And, you know, she's doing lots of trips, like revenue is going to change quite a bit because she's doing lots and lots of subsidized trips for, just because she's more accessible. Where before, lots of times, you know, people would phone at 3:00 and want a bus at 4:00, and everybody's out driving their school bus. They haven't booked ahead. So, I think people are getting educated. They got to book ahead to make it work, and she's more accessible. So, definitely, she's really booked up and a lot busier right now.
I've been seeing the bus go in town every day, pretty much.
Oh, good. So, it's easy to get a ride if you've booked, or to get an appointment into the city and things like that?
Book ahead is a strategy.
Book ahead, okay, okay. So, that's good that there's the flexibility, and we're seeing more and more now than, you know, before, that so drivers aren't a problem, then?
Well, they never were, but people, you know, it takes time to educate people that you got to book ahead because, and they, you know, like Miriam Roberts, she, Miriam Roberts and I have done lots and lots of work together over the years, and she said, "I'm really mad because the bus didn't pick me up." And I said, "Dr. Miriam, the reason this is working is because we're using school bus drivers. So, we would come and get you, but you can't, you can't wait till 2:00 to request a 3:00 appointment. You know, call ahead and schedule it, and then they'll schedule the busing and the drivers around that."
Okay.
That's why it works, is because we're using school bus drivers at this price. That's why it works at this price, is because of the school bus drivers.
Oh, wow, that's fantastic. And then you're saying that you're doing trips into the city for appointments and things like that. What about like events, like there's Christmas markets coming up, and, and, you know, maybe something going on like the seniors tea and things like that? I know that, I think that you had come in before, Amy, and you'd talked about it would be up to like Seasons or the Foundation and that.
To book, and which they do.
Oh, they do book, okay.
Yeah, we got the Christmas tour, Christmas Light Tour coming up here right away.
Oh, good.
Shangri-La Lodge has always done that, right from day one.
Yeah.
So, they build a bus and make a few trips around town and whatever, right? It's, it's about the quality of life of our seniors so that they can still get out and enjoy, right?
Yeah, yeah. And do you find that between the day-to-day trips and city visits and things like this, that the capacity is there? Like, is the bus big enough? Is it, are you finding you're running out of room? You could use a second bus? I'm just, I'm just asking all these things so we know?
I don't know if, I don't know if we're, I don't know if we're ready to go down that road, but Sam would love another bus. And I'm a fairly honest person. Most of you know me. So, I'm struggling, okay? I'm struggling with the conflict of running a bus for profit and being involved with the town. So, Sam would love a bus that she can haul basketball teams, volleyball teams, and all that kind of stuff, but she's pissed at Prairie, and she wants to run competition to them. So, for me, that's a little bit of a challenge as in, is this a conflict of interest that some of this is subsidized and some of this is for profit? I mean, that's not, that's not the business of government. So, I, I, my husband and I talked about this morning, and Amy and Brian and I have all four talked about it, that, you know, how do we do this? How do we do this in a way? Does it have to be two separate divisions of Drake's, or, because you don't want to use, you don't want to use money that's intended for subsidy for seniors or handicapped to run a profit to haul hockey teams, or not hockey teams, but basketball, volleyball.
Or people that are going to school, like TC to do the transport for them.
Yeah, or someone that needs to go to Walmart and get groceries, or, yeah.
Anyway, it's certainly, it's certainly on our radar, but we don't know how to make it work in a, in a politically correct way, or.
Yeah, yeah, and that's fair. Mr. Vincent, do you have a question?
Madam Mayor, to the chair, to our presenters, I'd like to follow up on the point that Mayor Dodd's made, and that is cost-sharing with Brazos County. Do any county residents take advantage of the service?
Yes, they do.
Would you have any statistics?
We gave the ridership. We give it every month.
No, the short answer is, do we say that five people from the county and 15 people from the town rode the bus? We don't have those stats in our hand.
It would be helpful. We have a joint council meeting coming up with Brazos County very shortly, and I'd like to see this on an agenda with them for discussion. It's nice that, I think the Town of Drayton Valley is putting the entire bill, and though the request isn't substantial in terms of total tax dollars, we are a partner in a regional setting, and so it would be appropriate for us to broach that particular subject with them. So, if there's any information that you could provide, myself and the administration, that would strengthen our argument, it just would solidify that particular regional partnership. Thank you.
So, with the, with Brazu Council, we requested funding from Brazu Council prior to this, and the answer we got was absolutely not. They are, they do not have charitable status.
I don't see this as charity. I think I can make a strong enough argument, and maybe we'll have more receptive ears if the message and request is coming from the Town of Drayton Valley. So, I put that olive branch out.
Yeah, I think it's a great, I think it's a great opportunity. We have a joint meeting coming up, so we'll add it to our agenda and give a little push, because it is where, where, you know, we share the same services. If you, if the seniors are, of course, they're living in our community now, whether it's Seasons or Shangri-La, but they once lived in the county, right? So, we need to take care of our seniors, so.
Yeah, I mean, if you go through Shangri-La, Seasons, Points West, absolutely, half of them are, half of the people that are there are previous county residents, absolutely.
Yeah, 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 and they're accessing.
We still travel out to the county to pick up people as well.
Oh, you do?
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
We travel to, or anywhere that needs to be picked up or go, so.
So, if you were Range Road 84?
To Marathon to pick up people to send to Red Deer.
Okay.
Before they had the bus service in Antwa, Saltford.
Yeah.
So, it's, the bus was initiated for Town of Drayton Valley and Brazu County. It's just Brazu County didn't want to play the same game.
Thank you for that information.
And it's been presented to them several times, and it's been shot down.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I think we're in a different era now, and we're moving forward, and we've been establishing and improving that relationship. So, I always ask people, trust me.
We will. Yeah, yeah. Counselor McGee?
Morning. What I was looking at and trying to get out of the financials is just sort of like the two-liner. So, we, the town's subsidizing now. Do we, are we getting subsidy from the GOA, from the government of Alberta? So, in reality, we run this bus system for 75, I couldn't actually, because I'm not very good at it, but for $75,000, and we helped with 25, and then there's in-kind donations. How does it all work? And in fact, can you fuel up that and drive somebody to the Gray Nuns and back and still manage? It just, it astounds me.
I'm going to say that we, we manage. We don't make a lot of money off of it by any means. We make enough to pay for the fuel, that portion of the insurance that we have to pay, which is a nice little chunk every year, inspections that have to be done.
Which are complimentary.
Which are complimentary, because I went out and shipped enough cans and bagged and feeded and so on and so forth. Everybody asks me what hat I'm wearing today when I walk into an office looking for money, because it's either for Drake's or the Legion or whichever, right? So, it's, a lot of things changed last year pertaining to the oil and gas industry, and that's, that's one of our big focuses for donation money through our community. We've always, you know, we put on the hockey tournaments to raise money and that. And this year, I'll be asking the team again to give a little bit of money. I'm not sure what they're going to donate it to, because I'm trying to step away from that bull scenario, trying the last four years. But it is just going out and dealing with the public type of thing, companies and businesses, and asking them for a donation in kind. It's whether they can do it or whenever it's been put into their budget for the year before. I covered that this year, right?
So, the one pager, so does it cost 100 grand to run the bus?
I don't think so. I, no.
Okay, and all I'm trying to.
Are you talking about 100 grand a year?
Well, all I'm trying to get is if we supply 25, which is, we're grateful to do, but 25 only is a quarter of what the costs are. And then another quarter comes from the community and another, you know, that sort of, just that little square that tells me exactly what's happening.
We could ask you guys for more, if that's what you want, Tom.
Well, no, I'm, really not my question, but.
It sounds like it.
I'm trying to establish how much it costs, and if we only put a quarter of the presented, that's all, that, or somewhere in that range, right? I have no idea. And looking through your finances, I get stuck on the home hardware bill, so.
Tom, you know, there's somebody in the room that can help you because he gets it in that sense, right?
Hans could help.
He, you, you get the financials.
Every year.
You can give Tom a short course on, okay, it really doesn't cost that much. Like, we're running this bus. Between the revenue that we get from trips and the, and the subsidy, we're running this bus for what? At the most, $40,000 a year.
And I guess what I was thinking about, the person that's getting into the bus that's going to Gray Nuns, there is a price point for that person. And, but it may not be, because that, that's a lot. I don't know what it costs.
Okay, Tom, I missed part of that. The person that's.
What it costs for that person to get on the bus?
$300. Round trip to Edmonton's $300.
Okay.
Unless you, unless the driver has to wait more than five hours.
Okay.
Depends what, you know.
Okay, okay. That's kind of where I was sort of, and so even that, to some people, is a lot of money. Okay, okay. That's kind of where I was sort of, and so even that, to some people, is a lot of money.
Right.
To get to Gray Nuns. And that's really what I was getting to, is that saying, okay, this... And so when our conversations with other folks, such as the GOA and the County of Brazzo, is that it, it's, it's not easy. It's, it costs money to do that. And if you're willing to help our seniors, because it's part of our community, they are part of our community, a big part of our communities, then, then we have to, it costs money. Simple.
And I think, I think we want to understand that if you're hiring somebody like Prairie, it's, it's around a hundred dollars an hour.
Okay.
And I realize they don't have the same type of bus, but they have smaller buses as well. And their rate right now is around a hundred dollars an hour. So no matter where we go, it's still subsidized.
Yeah, yeah, agreed. Okay, thank you.
And just a question for our administration, maybe Hans or Lola. Are there any sorts of grants or funding that support seniors' transportation? No? Oh, okay, so for those online, if a senior isn't able to afford the ride, let's say to an appointment or in the city or local, then FCSS will subsidize or help to subsidize the, the ride? Okay. And is that, are all the seniors aware of that, like that, at all the homes and where they're being picked up?
So I can tell you one reason this works at the price that we're charging is because of Sam. Because she says, as soon as I give one free ride, then everybody wants free. So she's not inclined to do free. She's more inclined to say, there are subsidies available. And I mean, we, Sam knows if she has to, that she can tell him this subsidy came from a donor. But, you know, they're, she, she, like she says, as soon as I say free, then everybody has to ride for free. And she's just not playing that game.
Yeah, and that's understandable. I think it's just important that the seniors that maybe do find this, this a little bit pricey, that there is the ability to reach out to FCSS and get some help with that. As long as that communication is there, I think is important. Any other questions? So we do have a motion up this morning. If there's a councillor that would like to make the motion, please. And then, as I had mentioned, we're going into budget deliberations tomorrow, so this is in our budget, which is nice. And we can let you know how that goes tomorrow, or you're more than welcome to come by. Is there a member of council that would like to...
If we win with Brazzo County, we'll be, we'll be thrilled.
And we will add that on to our joint council agenda as well. Is there a member of council that would like to make a motion, please? Councillor Kamanna?
Thank you. Is that the motion that we're going to make? Okay. I would like to make a motion that council will accept the report as information. At this time, I believe we will be discussing that, the budget tomorrow. Okay. Perfect, okay.
Okay.
Thank you, and thank you very much for coming and presenting.
Thank you. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Okay, then I'll call the motion. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much for presenting, and we'll be talking to you soon. Yes, thank you for that. We'll do our best. So that is it for our delegations this morning. We're going to jump right into our decision items. First up is seven point one, Elections Candidate Criminal Record Check Bylaw, two thousand and twenty-four zero one A. Ms. Jennifer Stone this morning. Good morning.
Good morning again, members of council. Town council gave first reading to Election Candidate Criminal Record Check Bylaw, two thousand and twenty-four oh one A, at the November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four regular meeting of council. Since that time, the proposed bylaw was advertised in the Free Press and on social media. We received one comment just asking to clarify if we needed to provide one or if they needed to pass one. It was clarified to that individual that they just needed to provide it. And having a criminal record does not preclude you from running in the upcoming election. And no phone calls were received for the advertisements in the paper. So as such, Election Candidate Criminal Record Check Bylaw, two thousand and twenty-four oh one A, is being presented today to council for second and third readings, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions this morning? Councillor Clark?
Thanks for this. I'm just looking at the, under general, section five. Says the record check must have been completed by the RCMP. Now, I remember there was discussion of the Brooks Municipal Police Force potentially doing criminal record checks. Are those still valid too, or are we relying solely on RCMP?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, to the Chair to Councillor Clark. If the local RCMP detachment engages the Brooks Police Department to do the criminal record checks, it is acceptable as the official criminal record check. So it's the mechanism by which the criminal record check is done, has been done locally through the RCMP. But if they're the agency that's approached, and they subsequently use a different agency to supply them with that record check, then that's perfectly acceptable.
Councillor Kamanna?
Thank you. Just a clarification about point five there. The criminal record check must be, have been completed by RCMP for not more than forty-five days before the date of nomination paper is submitted. So I guess with the provincial government's changes, that anybody can submit nomination papers from January first onwards. So, you know, that means that if they are submitting the nomination papers in February, it just need to be just within that forty-five day period of the submission. Just clarify.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Councillor McGee, did you have a question?
I did sort of have a couple of conversations with people about this, this subject, and why it's here, where it came from. And one of the questions that, that came to me was the question of, what are you trying to find out? What are you trying to, what do you want to know? And I thought, well, that's a good question. What do I want to know? And because if you're applying to work at your children's school, the reason you're going through a criminal records check is because they want to know if you've got, not necessarily an impaired driving charge, but if you have had some issues with children or those kinds of things, that's what they want. And if you have, you're not, you're not eligible. And then I thought, well, okay, what does that mean for here? I guess the, the only thing is that you, you would want to know that you're a good person. You don't have a criminal record. If that's the only result of all of this, I think wonderful. But it's certainly a creation of something that sometimes in a community our size isn't necessarily needed. But I'm all for doing whatever's necessary.
Through the Chair to Councillor McGee, I can answer that question. So these are changes to the Elections Act that the province has put forward as part of Bill twenty. That council through bylaw may request this as part of the nomination process. You don't have to. It's being brought forward for your consideration. The, the intent behind it is to enhance the transparency and trust in the election process. So if somebody wanted to come in and request the information, we can't, like, let you walk out of the building with it. You may come and look at it. Some people may want to look at that to influence how they may vote. So it, as I've said to others, it doesn't, having a criminal record check, if you have a criminal record, it doesn't preclude you from running. But if, if a resident that was going to vote wanted to come and look at it, that may influence their, their decision or not.
Mr. Vincent?
Madam Chair, to the Chair to all members of council, this isn't anything new in Canada. Other provinces have already put this in place. So, you know, we're familiar with the processes. I reflect upon last council meeting, and Councillor Kamanna made the statement, and I fully support and endorse. If we're doing this at the municipal level, it should be done at the provincial and federal levels. And I think this is something for a future discussion when we have the opportunity. Perhaps meeting with the Solicitor General and Minister of Justice to suggest to them, as well as to suggest to our MP Gerald Siroka, that might be something that they would like to champion, take forward, and say, hey, we're leading the way at the most junior level of government about the more senior levels of government, taking a page out of our books, eh?
Thank you for that. And I think too, you know, when, I think for me, it's the same reason that you would have it at the school or anywhere, right? We're, we're still around children. We go to the library, we go to the childcare. We, you know, are, we're, we're, we do a lot as councillors, right? So I think as Ms. Stone had mentioned, if people are wanting to inquire about who the people they're electing, they might want to know a little bit more about them, right, when they're out and about in the community and, and interacting. Is there any other questions? Is there a member of council that'd like to make a motion for second reading?
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion that council give second reading to Election Candidate Criminal Record Check Bylaw, two oh two four oh one A. It's outlined in AIR twenty-four two eighty-one.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Councillor Kamanna?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I'm okay with how it's written here. I wanted to support this. My only concern, like I said, on the first reading, like Mr. Vincent mentioned, you know, it would be nice to have other governments higher than us, having the, having the same kind of setup where then if the argument is that a community or the writings will know who's running and their backgrounds, and then, you know, that entitlement goes to the provincial and federal levels as well. The other piece that I'm struggling with is that I'm a firm believer of second chances. You know, there's maybe somebody who did something stupid when they are nineteen, and now they are fifty and trying to run for, for council and has been outstanding citizen for the, for the last number of years. Does it need it? Like Councillor McGee mentioned, right? But, you know, having, having the, how it worded, saying that, you know, they can still run. And, you know, we are not stopping them from the democracy, which I firmly believe in. Then that's fine, then they can, constituents to, to look at that person. And if, if the, the community thinks that that person is still good enough, then they should be able to get elected then and have elected official status. So I'm in, in support of how it's written right now because of that. Thank you.
Any further question, comment, or debate? Then I'll call the motion. All in favor? That is carried. Can I get a member of council to motion for a third reading? Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, in consideration, I would make a motion that council give third and final reading to Election Candidate Criminal Record Check Bylaw, two oh two four oh one A, as outlined in AIR two four two eighty-one.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? My only question would be, is so when nomination packages are going out, and when we're starting to do that, are we being clear that you need to hand in a criminal background check from an RCMP?
Thank you for that question. Yes, that'll be part of the communication that goes out. We are in the process of finalizing our nominee and candidate information package. This information will be on the website, social media, everything, because it is a significant change from last time.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Okay, if there's no further comment, question, or debate, oh, go ahead, Mr. Vincent?
Madam Mayor, to the Chair to all members of council, I had the privilege last evening while I was sitting in my suite, watching TV, to go through the draft agenda or nominee package. And it very clearly states in that particular package what the requirements are, subject to today's passage of the bylaw. So I'm very pleased to report that we're well ahead of the game, and we'll be ready absolutely for January first.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. So there's a motion on the floor for a third and final reading. I'll call the motion. All in favor? That is carried. Next up, thank you very much, is Ms. Elvira Thompson. We have the Q three financial report, seven point two.
So are you ready for some good news?
Yes, we are ready for some good news.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. It's that time of year.
Yes, it is.
We're already well into quarter four, which is, which is amazing.
I think there's a song called "It's the Most Wonderful Time of Year" that has to do with you.
Yes, 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 yes. Okay, so starting at the top of the first page there, so nothing really surprising to note. The only thing being, in other revenue, we see a two hundred thousand dollar, we're two hundred thousand over or above what we expected as of September. And that's mostly due to interest revenue, which is really great. We've talked about it before, but our interest is still doing better than we had expected and had budgeted for. Under general administration, again, nothing very significant to note. You see that under general administration, we are a little bit under budget so far. That's mostly due to the timing of some fees that come out at the end of the year, that just the, the budget, the way it was divided over the time, wasn't quite accurate. And when we go to protective services, for revenue, right, kind of where we would like to see it, under expenses, we have fire being a little over budget so far. There is just some turnover that happened at the fire hall and some unexpected repairs as well. But nothing significant. Under disaster and emergency services, we have part of Cody's wage, which was previously, he was only a CPO. And then when he came back, he, we reallocated his wage to, well, now he's also in disaster services, because he's our deputy den. So we just reallocated some of the wages. So it doesn't mean we're over budget overall. It just means that portion of our budget is, looks over budget. For transportation, right now, we have common services is very much right on budget. Road, streets, sidewalks, a little bit under budget, and the reason for that being twofold. One being that a large portion of our sidewalk repair was done in October, which was exactly right after this report. And so if I were to pull the report today, we would be closer to where we expected to be for our repairs and our expenses relating to road, streets, and sidewalks. And the other being snow. So we're very close to being, having met our budget this year, because we've had more snow from January to now than the prior year. However, we do have some reserves set aside for if, really when we do go over budget, unfortunately, this year. However, on the wages side, our internal wages, we were a little bit under budget heading into the fall for, for, sorry, for snow removal. But overall, yes, we are a little bit behind budget right now, not expecting to have significant savings in public works or in transportation by the end of the year. For utilities, water consumption or the water revenue is higher than we expected. So we did some digging just to see what the reason for that was. And it seems like we do have some more consumption, could be, we do have a business in town that, that has a large meter that does large amounts of water consumption. So some of it is like a true increase in revenue. Some of it might be related to people having leaks and such, like, things like that. But it's good news that water, water doesn't change very much year over year. So when we see that change, I'm always curious if it's not related to increase in rates. For sewer and waste, where we would like to see, waste is a little bit over, but we have, we see a lot less revenue in the last three months of the year than we do from the spring to the end or the beginning of winter. So that will even out by the end of the year as well. For expenses, water expenses are very close to where we would, you know, have expected them to be. Sewer expenses, a little bit behind, one thing being our vac truck operator was vacant for a large part of the year. And then we had some other movement within where some, there was vacant postings for parts of the year. They're, as far as I know, filled up now, but we do have some savings, cost savings there. For waste, we did have some savings in, for items that we got, the repairs for things that we got done internally. But those will be used on some other things that were unexpected. So by the end of the year, we, we are not expecting to be under budget for waste, which is the landfill. Moving on to community services, I am, so we see that the ECDC revenue is higher than we budgeted. But if you look at the expenses, the expenses are also higher. A lot of that revenue is, some of that revenue is directly related to staff wages. So for staff... So for staff, um, work so many hours, they get a top up, I guess, from the government. So you see the revenue is higher, but the expenses are also slightly higher, although we are expecting ECDC to end the year in a revenue position, which they do not always do. So that is really good news. For affordable housing, very good so far. The revenue is slightly higher than, uh, budgeted. And the expenses are slightly lower, which is really good news. Um, a lot of work being done by that department. And the vacancy rate being lower than we budgeted for and lower than what we have seen in prior years. And move on to planning and development. So for planning, we have that economic development, oh, sorry, not for planning, for economic development. We have, uh, more revenue there than we expected, and that's that grant. And I can't remember the name of the grant, but it was, um, the 90,000 that we received and then spent or paid to biocomposite. So you see the revenue being higher and then the related expenses also being higher than what we budgeted for. And then for planning in the expenditure side, we are under budget. We do still not have a general manager of planning. Um, I'm sure that at some point we will have one, but right now we are still seeing that vacancy there. Interviews are first week of December. So we're, we're well on our way to having a, a general manager of planning, planning and growth. For education, um, we realize that some of the, we, we have a more accurate representation of what time is spent by our staff in the education initiative. And so it's not that we have more wages overall in this department than we expected, but more wages are being allocated to education than what we budgeted. At the end of the day, net, uh, net revenue or net expenses for planning and development, very close to what we budgeted. Moving on to parks and recreation, under Omniplex, we're a little ahead in revenue. And that, that tends to happen at certain times of the year because the revenue come in, in groups. Like in the, in the fall, we see a big bump in revenue. I are expecting to end the year in with more revenue than expected, but perhaps not quite as much as what it looks like here at this moment. For the pool, still performing very well, still performing better than we expected. We've talked about this before, but it's very hard to, when we open, when the pool opened, we were like, okay, where do we even, how do we even begin to estimate the use and how many people will use it, right? Because the fees went up with a new facility. And it's, it's still performing very well, which is really great to see. Uh, we do, however, have that related expense increase too. The more we are open, the more our wages cost as well. But it is very good to see that, that the revenues are continuously performing well. Um, and all the other expenses very in line with what we expected to see. So you see at the end, at the bottom there, we are under budget by, uh, a few hundred thousand dollars in the parks and recreation area or division, I guess. And, um, although I do believe we will end in a bit of a surplus, I think it'll even out a little bit in, as we see some of the final expenses come in for the year. For contingencies, uh, right now it looks like we've only spent 56,000 of it. However, we have spent more, a, a lot more of it, almost the entire contingency. But some of them are related to expenses and, and, and are more properly allocated in a different area of the budget. So another area of the budget might be over and this might be under to even it out. Because, um, contingency for financial statement purposes is not an appropriate classification of expenditures. The expenses currently sitting in here, by the time year end is set and done, will be allocated to their appropriate expense categories. And we come to the end of it, to the summary. The big number that you're, we're all like to see is that currently we're trending almost a million dollars, uh, better than expected. It's, um, not entirely accurate because we know that the, the rate of the way we spend money, um, can fluctuate. So we might see certain departments, especially in some of Shelley's, where those aren't true savings. We know we're going to spend that money in the winter here. However, it is looking really good for the 2024 year so far. So that's really great news. And then additionally, additional to that, this doesn't include the additional revenue leveraged via the growth of our assessments in May. That when council chose to have the rate increase and the growth. So that doesn't include that. And we'll talk a bit more about that tomorrow when we do budget as well. Any questions on that portion? Perfect. Thank you. Uh, Counselor Clark, I'll go ahead, Mr. Vincent.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, to the Chair to all members of council. So really page six sums it up very nicely. That, uh, with three quarters of the fiscal year completed, that we're in very strong positive shape. Some of the reasons for that, and I would add that there's no suffering in the levels of service as a result of those particular cost savings. Some of the cost savings are due to vacant positions, which put additional stress on other members of staff to maintain those levels of service. And as, uh, Alvera has mentioned, the, uh, position of a general manager, planning development, we hope to fill, uh, very shortly. So overall, it's a very positive picture. And as Alvera said, uh, with the adjustments that come in the final quarter, we still are projecting, uh, fairly healthy surplus at year end, which is remarkable. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Counselor Clark?
Yeah, I will remain cautiously optimistic that we do, uh, through Q four. Um, I do have a question about the, uh, intermunicipal shared costs. So for instance, if we have ECDC and, you know, we, we run a deficit, of course, we're sharing those costs with the county. Now, when we have a surplus, what happens in that instance? Do we cut them a check for half of that surplus? Or do we throw that back into general, uh, revenues? Or do those go back into the ECDC specific account where those are carried forward?
Yeah. So this year will be an exception to the amount of surplus. So, um, the decision, it hasn't come to council for a specific decision. I haven't discussed with Pat. But I think the most appropriate thing to do would be to put the surplus into reserve and, and use it for childcare services, which then will benefit both the town and the county.
And then I guess the same holds true for the pool and any sort of shared services, the same sort of thing happens?
So the, the pool, they, they're, they always have a deficit. So we don't have that issue. There's always a deficit and they just cost share half that deficit. Exactly.
But theoretically, if we were to ever run a
Yes.
In a perfect world, run a
I, I would love, I would love to see that day, but yes, that's how it's treated. Um, ECDC right now would be the only one.
Cause the
Fire always has a deficit as well. Uh, airport always has a deficit, but yes.
But in the instance of the ECDC, we're, we're probably going to run a, let's call it a healthy, um, surplus, right? To the tune of north of 50 grand probably. Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious. Yeah, it'd be nice to see that kind of earmarks specifically for ECDC going forward to
I think that would be the most appropriate thing to do in this situation outside of, I think that's the most fair thing to do and the most appropriate. So I, I feel like Pat agrees, but I will continue to have that conversation when we wrap up the year here.
Now, Mr. Vincent?
Madam Mayor, through the Chair to all members of council, certainly that would be the wisest, uh, approach and certainly be a strong recommendation from myself and Alvera is though the county was vigorously opposed to ever cost sharing anything in ECDC, it seems that, uh, though the arbitrator, uh, made his ruling in favor of the town on that particular point, that they aren't going to suffer any financial costs as a result of a very expedient, uh, manner in which that particular facility and service is being operated. So while they don't have to share any costs, if there's any, uh, profit, there's nothing in that decision from the arbitrator that may suggest that the town has to share anything. So the prudent, uh, approach is definitely put it into reserves earmarked for any future expenditures. We're talking about some expansion, I think, or a playground, uh, improvements at the center. So that, that'll be funds that'll be fairly available to support those particular things. With regards to swimming pool, just for your information, on average in the province of Alberta, if you recover 44% of your total operating costs, you are doing really well. So, uh, there's never an expectation that, that those facilities will be breaking even or even make a profit. And if you look in the private market, and I think about a few facilities I'm aware of in the city of Edmonton, some private clubs, same occurs and the entire cost is supported through the memberships. They show, and I know my good friends in, uh, Stratcona County will pick me for saying this, but they always show that they're breaking even. They don't account for their administration costs in their budget. So we're presenting a bit of a false picture. So if you know financial operations and, uh, as I do, that, uh, there's certain smoke and mirrors, but you, you get caught eventually. So just some comments. Thank you.
Thank you. That. Counselor Cabana, do you have a question?
Yeah, um, thank you. I was, can't recall, um, the ECDC cost sharing. Was it operation capital both or just for operations?
Just operating. So the arbitrator, arbitrator ruling was for them to cost share for, um, their portion, like county children as a portion, as a percent of ours. So they proportionately cost share based on how many county children are in our facility and it's based on that prior year. So this year's, because we're going to have a surplus, then we budgeting for no cost share next year because it's based on that prior year.
Right. Here's a wishful thinking. I was thinking that, you know, if there's a surplus and I, I've seen in the budget, uh, packages that there's a couple of projects for ECDC for capital side.
Yeah, one, yeah.
About one project, right? Maybe, um, have a discussion at joint council and see if they are inclined to support.
Yeah. I mean, you, definitely. I know, we, we all know that capital, um, it, it would be unusual, I think. I mean, Pat would maybe know more for an arbitrator or for, you know, some, a third party to come in and, and kind of mandate something like that, only because capital is like a one, a decision made any single year based on like improvement or expansion or whatever it might be. And because we own that, um, capital asset at the end of the day, we do have to make sure that we gave them, uh, a fair chance to review and approve through their budgeting process. But yes, I, there is nothing preventing us from asking, but knowing the history specifically related to ECDC, um, I think that's why we did not propose that this year for this specific project in the budget.
Okay. Thank you.
So what percentage of the reserves would we allocate, um, in reserve? Or what percentage of the revenues would we allocate in reserves for capital projects then?
Specifically for ECDC?
Yeah.
We, we haven't been, and you know, ECDC has, has went from some years costing us money, some years just breaking even. And so this year is, we'll have to deal with it because we do, we are projecting a surplus. And because a deficit we charge the county 50 or proportionately to, my recommendation would be whatever surplus that the ECDC has, we put in a reserve and it can deal with it. Either to cover a following year deficit or, um, that, that would be the most appropriate thing to do. But alternatively, it could potentially fund projects as well.
I guess the reason I'm asking is because seeing a surplus and you had mentioned earlier about that, uh, Brazel County would see a decrease in the cost sharing amount, um, which I can understand because they're, we're sharing in the operating. But I would think that we'd at least be putting some, or I'd like to see at least some of that go towards a capital revenue, right? For any sort of like playgrounds or, or upgrades or anything like that. And, and then whatever, whatever percentage is going towards the operating to split to, to lower that, uh, cost between, cost sharing between Brazel County. But I don't know if we're, if it would just something we automatically do. I would assume because we own the capital and they don't, it's just the operating dollars. Mr. Vincent?
Madam Chair, uh, through the Chair to all of council. So without divulging our strategies that I normally talk to council about in closed sessions, uh, the advice would be to, uh, put any surplus, all surplus from current year operations into an unrestricted, uh, reserve that leaves it to the discretion of council to apply to whatever. So if it's capital projects strategically, I would put it into only capital projects because we have the backstop of cost sharing, any operating, operational deficits with our partner, Brazel County. So from a financial perspective, from the town of Dretton Valley's, uh, uh, view, viewpoint, that would be the most prudent, uh, approach, uh, to the finances overall. So.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions for this part? Or go ahead, Counselor McGee?
I have two questions. Um, uh, the question around, um, if I look at council, um, I, I see in 2021, we were at 456,000 and year to date, we're at 334. So we shaved off about 225,000 in council expenses is, uh, we, we can't attribute that to COVID. We, we've just been budgeting lower and lower and lower the costs of council. Is that how that worked?
Yeah. So the, um, total budget for 2024 is 557,000. So that's the total budget. The estimated budget year to date as of September is 362,000. So you are a little under budget, but not significant, not significantly. We do have some cost savings through, um, what we, in 2021, we were still low because of COVID and we weren't going to really many conferences and stuff. So the actuals, the 2021, 22, 23 actuals, you see them creeping back up, right? So you don't have much for cost savings this year, um, in council, but maybe a little bit.
Um, cemeteries, uh, we've been as high as 50,000. We're at 27,000. Uh, are we cutting the grass less or?
Cemetery is, it, I'm not sure in terms of cutting the grass for the expenses. Um, the budget for 2020, the, the budget for 2024 is 49,000, which is very much in line with what we've spent in prior years. We haven't spent quite that much yet, but we do have quite a few months left. And so I'm, I'm not expecting to be very under budget, but I just heard Shelley tell Pat something. So let him tell us that.
Madam Mayor, through the Chair to you, Counselor McGee. It's because the contracted services that we did previously have, is now being provided internally by staff. So there's been significant cost savings as a result. So it just speaks to how to do things differently. Find effective, efficient, uh, solutions. And I commend, uh, the general manager of, uh, municipal operations for doing so.
Perfect. So we're still cutting the grass, still removing the snow and still moving all of that.
Um, so the headline is, uh, a million dollar surplus?
We're trending right now. Um, but we do have, quarter four can sometimes, for multiple reasons, be an expensive quarter. So we are expecting a surplus, but not a million dollars. But that's where it's trending at, at the moment.
Last, the, the building relationships, the, this particular, uh, way to present the budget. And, and we're, we're going to learn some new things coming up shortly. But it would seem to me, uh, and I don't know if we do this, uh, just to share this with the county. Uh, I know it's public information, they can look, but it's one of those things that you could just say, oh, by the way, we've just done a quarterly thing and here it is. So have a look through it.
Yeah, I, um, I send call in quarterly transactions, not only the year to date for every account, but also the transactions within account was part of the, well, we did it before the arbitration, but it was part of the arbitration ruling as well. Um, I don't often break down like, oh, we're trending over or under or that kind of thing. I let him do the analysis. But sometimes we talk about where we're at, or if we're, we're projecting an increase and I want him to know that for his budget, then I do communicate that as well. But yes, he does get, he doesn't get our whole financials, but he does get recreation, fire, airport.
Go ahead, Mr. Vincent.
Madam Mayor, through the Chair to, uh, council, just for council's information, we are scheduled to have a joint executive committee, uh, meeting, uh, between the town of Dretton Valley and Brazel County coming up here, I think, second week of December. So certainly could be one of the topics that we'll share with them. We'll be talking about budget process, how their budget process went, how ours went, and the relationship between our two municipalities. So. and the relationship between our two municipalities, so we're in solid ground with them.
Uh, Councilor Clark?
Um, I do notice they did send an email out this morning, uh, from the county indicating there's about a half dozen things that, um, uh, I guess are contingent on the town approving as well, so, um, I'm assuming those will come at that meeting as well, or prior, I guess.
Madam Chair, through the chair to all of council, it's being included in tomorrow's budget discussions. The impact actually is only going to be seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars from the two requests plus consideration for the paving of, uh, the Range Road, that we're working on numbers, but I'm not as optimistic in responding to that one.
Okay, wonderful. If there's no other questions, then we'll move along.
All right, sounds good. Whoa, we're popular today.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, let's move on to financial information. So at the top, we'll have the receivables and the general receivables, we see that as of September thirtieth, 2024, was significantly lower than September thirtieth, 2023. And because of the cyclical nature of a municipality, I've, I include, uh, instead of including the prior quarter's receivable balance, I include this, the last year, that same quarter, because it's more useful information for us. So seven hundred and seventy-six thousand as of September thirtieth and just over a million as of September thirtieth of last year. And the reason being that we had a large, a timing of when a large bill from the county was paid is just, it could be a matter of days into October when they paid it compared to having paid it in September this year. So there's, it's, it's not that we're doing way better in collections, although we have made improvements in that area, but it's just the timing of when a large invoice was paid. For utilities, very much in line with prior years. Um, and for taxes, this one is, I'm very proud of, I'm very proud to say that our team has continuously worked to improve and work with people to get their property taxes paid that are behind, and it's really shown. So, um, we talked a little bit about this a few weeks ago when we had someone come in and ask for forgiveness and like what the MGA kind of regulates for us to do. And we've had in the past, and nothing against people in the past, it's just a different way of doing it, that have just done exactly what the MGA states, you know, you send a notice in May, you send whatever, you, you add them to tax notification in March the next year, and you do exactly what they say. We've added a couple extra steps in, in our point of view, that doing that little bit of extra work before people are super behind actually saves us time from when, you know, having to do all that work when somebody is close to a tax seal. So it's just about when you're, we're choosing to put the effort in, I guess, and it's really paid off really, really big. So, um, Kim and Connor on our team have, have done really, really great work, uh, in that department. So if you see them, give them a high five. Uh, deferred revenue, so we talked about this, you know, I've talked about this for a few years, but for the last couple of years, we've saved almost all our gas tax funds, it's called Canada Community Building Fund, I believe it stands for, CCBF. We've saved it all for 50th Avenue, uh, and so we had a lot, deferred revenue is essentially money we've received from the government to be spent on projects that we have not yet spent. So it sits in that deferred revenue category on the balance sheet. And this year, it's decreasing because we're starting to use it, we're starting to use that to build a road, we're almost done. So that's why that deferred revenue is decreasing. And the debenture balance, we did pass to new bylaws for new debentures this year, and I have not yet actually, um, borrowed the money because for our cash flow right now, we can float it until interest rates drop a little bit more. So I'm strategic about it to make sure I'm not go, you know, entering into a 20-year debenture at a rate, even a percent lower can make huge, huge differences for the town and future taxpayer, right? Current and future. So the debenture balance is lower because we did not debenture more money and we are continuously paying off the current debentures. Bank balance, very comparable to last year. And the only grant receivable right now, currently as of the, to date that, um, that I know of anyways, is the LGFF, we have not yet received the 2024 grant. It's not unusual, they want to, they, they always look at our, um, applications and they critique it and say whether it's eligible, and it's not about whether or not we will be eligible, it's about, they want to check it, the exact projects that we're going to be doing, um, for a couple reasons, one being then they can, um, they can post it on their news and stuff. So a few years ago, you'll remember when they said like, this is what the province is getting done with LGFF, and one thing was 50th Avenue, I don't know if you guys remember that. So once that eligibility is, and all the checks and balances are in place for the specific grants, that money will come in, no, no concerns about whether or not it's coming in. And at the bottom, I have that note about the landfill and how we had our obligations, our future obligations and the way we record them change, which is why the reserves increased from September of 23 to September of 2024. Any questions on that section?
Councilor Clark?
Um, just really quickly, so the internally restricted then is, um, essentially increased about six hundred grand year over year?
Yes, so we have, yeah.
Five hundred and ninety?
Yes.
I guess I'm looking at the five million and seven, uh, and then we're at six three, right?
Correct. So we are putting about a hundred and sixty thousand into, you remember a few years ago, council made the motion that 1.25% of revenue, net revenues, were going to go into reserves, so we have that going into internally restricted in 2025, it'll be about a hundred and sixty thousand. Um, in 2024, it was less because our revenues are increasing. We have the ice plant that we're saving up for, a hundred and sixty-six thousand, we have the AFRAX radios and Travis funds, so yeah, about, yeah, around that, which are automatically going in, um, trying to increase them every year because it's, it will have a lot of infrastructure replacement that's coming up, but correct.
Councilor Comanna?
Thank you. Um, just curious, deferred revenue, after the 50th Avenue project, how much would we have left?
Um, I don't remember how much of that is.
That's fine.
A million or two, but the, as soon as this million dollars that you see coming in, as soon as that comes in, it goes right into deferred revenue, and then once we use it, we put it into our, our capital revenue section. So it's hard for me really to project right now what it's going to be at, but usually it'll be at least a few million, just for the timing of when the money, because we get prepaid it and then we spend it. We get prepaid it, unlike a lot of other grants that we have to spend and through that we're spending, LGFF and CCBF, they send you the money and then we spend it. So there's always some in there.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor McGee?
To say, I think, uh, grants receivable, the LGFF, that, that grant generally we get, uh, do we attribute that to Alberta council is my question?
No.
Yes, I thought so, thank you.
Okay, no other questions?
Awesome, and the last section, I'm not going to spend too much time on, it's just mostly so council can see, uh, the spending on our capital projects. And so, um, yeah, if, if council has any questions related to capital expenditures, these should be, you should be able to, to use this and your, um, updates that you get once a month and kind of see where the projects are at, but certainly I can try to answer any questions if, if you do have some on the capital expenditures.
Sure. Does anybody have any questions on, um, capital budget summary Q3?
And just one thing to note is that as of September thirtieth, you see at the bottom, we spent 1.7 million.
Yeah.
As of the date I did this report, which was last week, or maybe earlier this week, we've already spent just over 2 million, um, and we're obviously spending a lot more on 50th Ave, those invoices are just coming in. So that, the 50th Ave East improvements, we'll spend quite a bit more, but we will have savings, they're not true savings, and it just means that we will not spend the 11 million this year, not because they're savings, but simply because we have not made progress on the projects. It doesn't mean that we're not doing the projects or that we're not going to, it just means that we just have not made that progress yet.
That triggered a question for me, um, we had a presentation last, uh, council at the GMP about, um, we better be putting some money away for water and others. Um, is this reflected at all in, in this, or is it more for our budget discussions in the next?
It's not reflected in this per se, but 11 million dollars of capital for a single year is a large number, when you think of us putting 600,000 in. So it's not that there's really a reflection here necessarily, but it is definitely meaning that we have large projects that, we're not in the 30 year, 30 years from now where we have like stuff failing, but we are still having large capital replacement and upgrade projects, um, that are happening now that we need to be saving. It's a reflection of what's coming down the road, I guess, is what I'm saying, and so, yeah, we should be saving up for them.
Mr. Vincent?
Madam Mayor, through the chair to all of council, certainly as Councilor McGee reflected on, uh, on the asset management presentation we had, uh, last Wednesday, that we are depending upon the surpluses from the utilities operation, which is a detriment to long-term fiscal planning. At budget tomorrow, we have a solid recommendation how to wean ourselves off of, uh, the surpluses from utilities, and there'll be a three-year, uh, proposal for council to consider, which will then put us in the, uh, stronger financial light and position in moving forward, because that, you know, it's got to be a 25 or 30-year strategy, but you have to take the first steps first to get there. So based on, and we'll go in greater detail, but just to give you a, a high, high level overview, is based on growth, uh, that we anticipate over the next couple of years and, uh, reduction in reliance on that, uh, surplus, we could manage very easily in three years' time to be in the position where all of the proceeds from utilities are starting to go into, uh, a restricted surplus for future assessment, uh, or future, um, replacement of infrastructure. So I think it's going to be very sound and I think council will be pleased with the strategies we're proposing.
Thank you very much for that. Is there a member of council that'd like to make a motion, please? Councilor Clark?
I will make the motion that council accept the quarter three financial report per AAR 24290 as information.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion?
Can I ask a question?
Oh, go ahead, Councilor Comanna.
Sorry, just, uh, I guess for the information out there, so we budgeted 11 million, um, and now we've about hovering around 2 million for, um, I'm assuming some of them are multi-year, uh, projects, that's why we are.
Correct, yeah, so, uh, well, some of them are multi-year projects, like 50th, um, and then the water distribution line, it's, it is a multi-year project, but also we have not made the progress on that project the way we had expected as well, so it's a bit of both. So some of them, yes, correct, it is multi-year, so we wouldn't necessarily expect to spend that all in 2024.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Okay, uh, comment, question, debate on the motion. Uh, my only comment is, is looking forward to budget discussions tomorrow, uh, and with that, I'll call the motion, all in favor. That is carried and we will call a reset.
Thank you.
For 10 minutes. Okay, we will reconvene the meeting back at 10:36 AM. Uh, next up on our decision items are 7.3, policy regarding how council reports are to be submitted. Mr. Vincent?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. So under council policy, uh, 30, or C dash 02 dash 1 for council meeting its agendas and public hearing policy, we've simply included page number 36, uh, council communications, council may present in writing notices, motion, and secondly, reports on any meetings attended or matters dealt with at the request of council for inclusion on the agenda, but they may not present any other written communications prepared by them or on their behalf. So the question arose in a discussion between myself and Madam Mayor, in terms of the council reports, we should standardize the approach, and would certainly be my strongest recommendation, though it creates a little extra work for council, that your reports be submitted in writing to include on the, within the agenda package. It would serve two purposes, one, it informs your fellow members of council what's going on, and if there's questions arising, then they're, they are prepared for council meetings to ask those particular questions for more information or clarification. And secondly, and as importantly from my perspective, it's a communication tool with the residents for the town of Drayton Valley. So there are many people who do, uh, tune in to our, uh, council meetings, but other people look at the agendas online, and if those reports are in as part of the agenda package, they have an opportunity as well. So we bring it forward for your consideration and discussion, and hopefully, uh, some consensus on how to move forward.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions? So I think the request would be just, uh, we were kind of moving towards this direction a few months ago and then kind of just moved away, so I think maybe the Wednesday, uh, the agenda comes out on the Friday, so I guess if council could have their council reports in by the Wednesday, um, of the week previous to council, that way Ms. Thompson can get them in the agenda, um, and they can get included in the package. So just your, um, your reports will be from Wednesdays to Wednesdays, right? They won't, I know there was a discussion that came up about, well, no live stuff to add. Um, if there's anything you want to speak to and you want to add at the council meeting, then you have all the power to do that. Councilor Clark?
Um, so, Pat, are you suggesting we have a template and we fill that template in and then submit it? Um, or do we just kind of freewheel it and kind of do it how we each do it?
Administer, uh, Madam Mayor, through the chair to council, or Clark and all members of council, we'd be, uh, pleased to prepare a template for council to use, and, uh, ask Ms. Thompson to prepare that immediately. And our next council meeting now isn't until December 11th, so we'll have lots of time and you have lots of things to report on, so.
Councilor Evans? Oh, then I'll go, you, and then I'll go, Councilor Comanna.
So are we doing, uh, continuing to do council reports on, in, in both GMP and our council meetings, or are we going to just do them at council meetings now with the new reports?
Madam Mayor, through the chair to, to Mayor Evans and to all members of council, I believe that we only need to do it once, and that is at council meetings. It's a duplication and there's very little additional information usually between council meeting and governance and priorities, so to streamline the entire operation and make more effective use of council's time, we'd have them at council meetings, at both regular council meetings each month.
Great, I agree, thank you.
And I don't think typically they're on the, um, agenda for our governance and priority, I think it just got added on last week for, for some reason, I seen it on the agenda there, but I think typically in the past, I don't think we've reported at GMPs, I don't think. Yeah, we sure have. Councilor Comanna?
Thank you, yeah, I like the idea of standardizing and, you know, if there's a template, um, the only concern is that of course, given the opportunity, if there's anything to add at the, at the meeting, or if, you know, we were busy or in a conference or couldn't submit the, the report at, you know, the given time, give the opportunity to do that at the meeting as well, just my two cents.
Thank you for that. Councilor McGee?
So to a question I asked earlier about what do you want to know, and I'd be interested in knowing how many people actually look to see what's in our agenda packages, because I know how many people attend, and I'd be interested to know how many people are actually watching on television today, um, because I'm trying to think of, what do you want to know? And, well, it's just a, it's just a. Yeah, so if we have a lot of people attending online, I, I understand that, but still to my question, in my, I'm just in my mind saying, okay, so now I have a report. okay, so now I have a report going in, and I went to this meeting, and this meeting, and this meeting, and this meeting. But, and so, and then I turn around and I feel pretty redundant to me. But there I have, I've got my list of meetings. So good on you, Mr. McGee. Well done. What come out of that? What did you, what did you learn anything at the meeting? You get anything from that? And do I write a paragraph on that? And so it's, I'm not a real big fan of just doing something for not much value.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah, I think this conversation happened last Council meeting. Everyone tried to get away from writing reports for conferences.
Madam Mayor, through the Chair to Counselor McGee and to all members of Council, certainly when you prepare the report, it streamlines the Council meeting, because you don't have to read your report. Everybody's had the chance to read it. So if there are certain highlights, I would find the most valuable aspect of it is reporting on outcomes. If you attend, say, a foundation meeting, and there's discussion with respect to, you know, funding or with regards to expansion of the foundation, I think those are things that I would encourage Council to report on. That, you know, what's happening, you know, that affects the community and you'd like to share with the community. Those are the highlights. If you're attending the FCSs Board Meeting, and there's a discussion on the housed population in the community, and there's some aspect of it that is new or, you know, needs to be shared with the community, those are sort of the highlights. You know, simply reporting, well, I attended, you know, this, you know, Library Board Meeting. We do. So, but if you attended the Library Board Meeting and they mentioned that there's a twelve percent increase in membership or usage, or there's specific issues that is challenging the Board, I think that's important to share with Council. And that's part of Council's commitment in serving on the various agency boards and committees, the ABCs. So that would be my offer, you know, in terms of crafting a report.
Totally agree.
Are you looking for a motion on this?
Madam Mayor, I think if Council agrees, we wouldn't go ahead and change the policy. I think, you know, if that's simply the standard, Council would agree, then simply a motion to accept the report as information would be, all that would be required.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Is there a member of Council who'd like to make a motion? Counselor Sheriffs?
I'll make a motion that Council review the information provided and accept as information.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Then I'll call the motion. All in favor? That is carried. And that wraps up our decision items. Next up is Council reports. They are not in here this week. So does anybody have anything to report on this week? And then we'll start the trend next week or the next Council meeting, just before the agenda packages go out. Counselor Sheriffs, you're up first.
So I have mentioned a few things that we've done over the last few weeks in the last meeting, so I won't repeat myself. But I was looking, when earlier I was going through the financial reports, we had some money put aside for some furniture at the CTC building. And at one of the conferences, I picked up a little pamphlet booklet about furniture. So I'm not sure who I should hand it over to, but if anyone wants to have a look at it, I'll pass it along. And that's about it for now. That's it.
Thank you very much for that. Next up, Counselor McGee.
When we're doing our report, so I met with a citizen, in fact, of Life Church, Randy Rye, Pastor Randy Rye. And he wanted to talk about the parking lot and the snow removal and the plan for going forward. And I thought it was an excellent conversation sometime spent. I directed him to Administration to see if he can formulate a, some sort of a document, because they're looking for some long-term lease of that particular property rather than short-term. And I said, well, that's something that we need to address within Council. And then in the long term, there may be even opportunity for them to expand the church. And I said, you know what? You need to talk and get it into our conversation around the concept of that whole area with to be tied into it as it's there, right on the corner of that, of that piece of property. And so that would be good to have that included in our conversation about where they might think they might like to go and where we're going to go. And so that's really my story of the day.
Thank you very much for that. Counselor Clark?
Excuse me, Madam...
I'll go ahead, Mr. Vincent.
Thank you. Through the Chair to Counselor McGee, Administration has started already to work on an area structure plan for that property. So I thank you very much for drawing that to our attention. We'll get in touch with Pastor Douglas, who is our Planning Officer, is in charge of that project. So that's very timely, so we can start that conversation and include it as part of the area structure plan that we're developing. So very timely. Thank you.
Counselor Clark?
Okay, and I would also add that Shale Clinic probably should be included in that as well, because they do, they do use that parking lot as well, so. I don't have a ton to report. I did attend Government Liaison Days, wasn't necessarily as a town councillor, but it was interesting, because it was mostly focused on real estate, but there were ministers and the Premier was there and such. But one of the things that really kind of jogged my memory here was the talk about rental units and the average cost in Canada being twenty-one hundred dollars a month for a rental unit. And I was just curious as to whether or not there was any sort of update on the apartment buildings that were being built in Drayton Valley. One in three adults rents. And again, we've only had twenty-eight units built in the last forty years. So I was just curious if there was any sort of update on the progress of those, if they've applied for development permits and those sorts of things.
So are you speaking the one specific?
So the one north of Rotary, and then there's the one on...
Industrial Road?
Yeah, Econo Rest.
Madam Mayor, unfortunately, I don't have that information at hand. The, we'll confirm with Planning and circulate email response to Mayor and Council following today's Council meeting. Thank you.
And that's all I have. Thanks.
Perfect. Thank you, Counselor Kamana.
Thank you. On the fourteenth, I attended DVHTA AGM. Ryan Finn was elected as President for next year as well, as well as Rose Lutman as the Vice Chair. They have, they have collected some funds through the Hospital and Tourism Authority. And of course, they've been very generous supporting the community with some grants. On the twenty-second, I had the opportunity to attend University Partnership Meeting with our Mayor Dodds, and it was a good discussion there about the education portfolio and the partnerships we have, and, you know, from where, from here, where we need to go and all that. So there will be a report, I'm assuming, coming to Council at some point as well. Twenty-fifth, I attended the Drayton Valley Multicultural Association AGM. Juan Tandock was again elected as the, as a President, as well as Paul Valval as Vice President. And yesterday, I had the opportunity to attend a newcomer support team meeting, and they're just trying to get things together and start, I guess, you know, start helping the newcomers in the community. Just still in the initial process of setting up the, up the organization yet. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor Evans?
Since my report a week ago at GNP, all I have to report is agenda setting for this meeting last Thursday. That's it.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. So for myself, just been busy still with Midsize Towns Mayor's Caucus. We were preparing, and then we had a meeting with Premier Daniel Smith and Minister MacGyver in regards to that supplementary funding on ways that we can do it. Out of that meeting came a working group, so we're pretty excited about that now to be working with the Premier's Office on how we can get additional funding for infrastructure for the eighty-four municipalities in Alberta under fifteen thousand. So that's about three hundred and fifteen thousand people. So it's good that they've given us the opportunity for additional meetings, and we're now forming that group. So I'll give you details as that kind of moves forward. I attended a few grand openings with a few councillors over the last week. With, one was at Notting Donkey, was their grand opening. Julie celebrated twenty-five years. And Nature's Garden celebrated forty years. So it was nice to celebrate the businesses in our community, to see new businesses open up. And then I attended, yeah, the University Partnership Workshop with Counselor Kamana. It was a great workshop, a great couple hours spent. We'll be talking a little bit further about that in our Economic Development Meeting this afternoon. And that is it for me. Is there a member of Council that would like to make a motion to accept our reports as information? Counselor Kamana? Thank you very much for that. All in favor? That is carried. Next up, we have Council Items, nine point one, Discussion on Deputy Mayor Appointment. Do you want me to hand this over to you, Deputy Mayor Evans? Or do you want me to speak to it?
You can go ahead if you like, Madam Mayor. Was this in, you know, I looked at that. Is this in reference to me approaching Counselor Sheriffs and seeing if she'd be available a month before her official start time?
Yeah. So I think that you were looking at, you were thinking sometime in January, but when we look at when our meetings are, we don't really have any meetings until mid-March. So we're just wondering, was talking with Counselor Sheriffs now, if December twelfth would, or, yeah, December eleventh would work, because that's the only regular Council meeting we have in...
Oh, to make the change official.
Yeah, to make the change. Because we have that, have a motion to make that.
Yeah. No, I get that. You know, it's, it's, it's up to Council. As I explained earlier, I just, I have a busy beginning of the year. I have some work that I need to take care of. So I was just looking at trying to make that transition a month early. So I'm fine going into January. I don't know when our, when our first meeting in January is.
It's not till the fifteenth, yeah.
So, you know, I'm, I'm okay with that. You know, again, I just approached Counselor Sheriffs just to make sure she was, had the time and was interested. If, if, if you aren't, I'm perfectly happy to kind of hang in there. It would just work out for my scheduling better if I can hand that over a month early. So I'm okay with January fifteenth, if we want to leave it till then. Or we can, we can do it earlier if that's the desire of Council. I'm, I'm okay with, with either or.
I'm, I'm okay with either or. Mid-December, mid-January, I don't have anything major happening, so.
Either or. Yeah, December, it starts to wind down before Christmas. January, sometimes, depending, can get a little bit, yeah. People sometimes jump right at it, back to work. It's hard to say, right? Right now, the calendar's pretty, pretty slim. But it's up to you guys, what, whatever you want to do. So a motion or a report would have to come. We'd have to up that, because typically it would be coming in February or March? February. So we'd be just bringing it forward so we can discuss even at our next agenda setting and see if we want to put it on there, or you guys can talk.
Totally up to you. I'm, I'm okay with either or, so.
Madam Mayor, may I be so bold to suggest that we deal with it on December eleventh? I know we're going to have a fairly heavy agenda for last regular meeting Council, but I think to expedite the process and ensure smooth transition, bring forward a report at the December eleventh regular meeting Council for the early exchange of duties and the Deputy Mayors. And if we can get just a motion giving Administration direction to prepare a report and bring it forward on December eleventh.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Is there a member of Council who'd like to make a, not a report, a motion? And a report if you'd like. Counselor Evans?
Sure, I can make that motion. Okay. I'll make the motion that Council direct Administration to bring forward a report for early Deputy Mayor duties to be transferred to Counselor Sheriffs from Counselor Evans on, or at December eleventh.
At December eleventh.
The pressure's on. Pressure's on.
No pressure.
How about I just read through that one, one more time, once, once it's all kind of messed around? Okay. I'll take another crack at it here. I'll make the motion that Council direct Administration to bring forward a report for early Deputy Mayor duties to be transferred to Counselor Sheriffs from Counselor Evans at the December eleventh regular meeting of Council. Fair enough?
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Then I'll call the motion. All in favor? That is carried, and we'll see that at the December eleventh meeting. I did have just a couple questions here under Council Items, one being the downtown, these are both for Ms. Terry. One being the downtown banners. I seen that all of our Christmas lights and snowflakes and everything went up, which absolutely looks fantastic again. And so does your hair. Come on, just noticed a haircut. Looks lovely. And just wondering, I see the banners are wrapped. They look great. And we have the Oilers celebrating Oil Country, which I think is really special, because I think it gives us kind of that community pride and bragging. So I guess my question there was, are we leaving them up and just going to put the Merry Christmas on the back? Or we're just leaving them?
Thank you for the question. No, we're, we're removing them.
Oh, they are?
Yeah, and putting up the, the Christmas banners. They're only facing one way, right? So to put them on the other side, nobody's going to see them like, like, just the way they are designed in the brackets and the shape of them. There's not really any way to keep both up at the same time, unfortunately. It's happening Thursdays, so if you'd like us to leave the Oilers banners in place, let me know now, and we can call that off.
I'm suggesting leaving one Merry Christmas, one Oilers, one Merry Christmas, one Oilers. I don't know. What does Council think? I'm open to discussion. I just think it's pretty spectacular for our community, and it seemed like it was short-celebrated, right? What does everyone else think? Go ahead, Counselor Sheriffs.
Is there a plan to put the Christmas ones up, and then after holidays, taking them down and putting these ones back up?
That can absolutely be accommodated.
Yeah. I'd be in favor of that, maybe.
Counselor Clark?
I'm fine with either or.
Counselor Evans, does it matter to you?
No, I'm, I'm fine either way as well. I, I think it's a good idea to, to, to keep celebrating Oilers. So, yeah, I'm, I'm fine with a, with a mix. Sure.
Counselor McGee? Counselor Kamana? Sure. Is that some kind of direction?
Madam Mayor, we've got very clear direction.
Oh, thank you very much for that. Looking at your work in half, yeah.
I was going to suggest that anytime the Oilers lose, we'll take the banners down. When they win, we'll put them back up.
Well, it's not so much, I mean, yes, I like the Oilers. It is about the Oilers, but I think it's about our community being recognized as Oil Country, right? I think that's pretty spectacular and just having the spotlight. So I think that's still worth celebrating. Okay, and then my second question was, so with the recent snowfall, have you had a chance to rethink the curbs at the Omniplex? And the only reason I ask this is I'm asking you to be honest. I've had several phone calls about the curbs. And so now that you've done the snow removal and kind of you've had them there for a while, how are things going? What are you thinking? Are you thinking that it's still a great decision, or?
Thank you for the question, Madam Mayor, and through to the rest of Council. I, I do think it's, we're going in the right direction on this. It is going to help. Of course, there's always those, those impacts that we have to pivot when we do something like this. But our snow removal crew had no feedback as to them being a problem in that operation, so that's positive. We still do have to anchor... Um, we still do have to anchor them and, and kind of make them a little bit more visible to the public. Of course, now we're into snow removal, so it's a little bit more challenging to get that completed, but we're still working towards that. Um, and I, I honestly think it was, it was a good decision. It makes it a true parking lot now. Um, traffic flow is going to be in the right directions. There's not gonna be a lot of cutting through and, and racing through that parking lot. So I, I do think that it was a good decision.
Okay, perfect, good. Yeah, just because I've been receiving quite a few phone calls, right, about that? So then I thought, well, I'll bring it up today and then see what your thoughts were. And did you get a chance to do the snow removal? Did they do it after this? No, they did, okay, good. And that's, it's really good to hear that it went well then because I was imagining that they would get pushed around a bit there.
No, 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 they did very well. Um, yeah, it's, it's going well and we have some other work to still do, but we're getting there.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, does council have any other council-initiated items? Counselor McGee?
And just add to that, can you, can you win room? And then sort of instead of you got a curb this high, you now have a, a bank that high? And just, just so it's, it's there.
Instead of removing the snow, I mean, you can do it to a point, yeah. But then, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend doing that, no. I think removing is our best option here. And with the public, I, I have been watching kind of it unfold on, on Facebook and, and, you know, there's a 50/50 split here. There's, there's people that are absolutely for it and, and others that aren't. And, and that's gonna happen when we make these decisions, but it's to be expected.
Yeah, the calls that I've received aren't the, the most pleasant, so that's why I was wondering how things were blowing up on your end.
And you're gonna hear those more so than the positive.
Yeah, yeah.
For sure.
Good, good, and I appreciate the feedback. Uh, does council have any other?
Just so we continue on. So the snow event, I, I was away in Calgary for the whole entire snow event. Um, and coming back in on Monday afternoon, I'm, I'm noticing sidewalks down and, and I'm thinking, well, okay, did we do downtown? Did we, did we do all that or did somebody else, did they take responsibility for themselves?
They absolutely took responsibility for themselves. We did not remove any of the snow in the downtown core unless they were our sidewalks.
So if you're going down past Independent, just know that you're gonna walk on a track.
Some locations still have, yeah.
Right? So there are gonna be sidewalks. Are we gonna ask people to sort of pay attention? That, that's now your responsibility, are we going down that road? Because we didn't really do that last year.
Uh, we, we did and we didn't. I mean, enforcement, of course, got involved with, with the individuals that weren't clearing their sidewalks. So I, I, that communication is still being had with those individuals and, and I'm sure it will continue until they get in the habit of, of doing what they're supposed to, so.
And Mr. Vincent, are you adding that into the agenda? Because just watch me, I heard it a number of times and I am not sure what that actually means around this particular topic of snow removal.
Madam Chair, the Chair to Council McGee and all members of council, why have a municipal bylaw if you're not going to enforce it? So the message has been sent out to the community last week. I think Jennifer for our notice that went out, I think went out to all of council for snow removal. And the same message is going out with regards to resident and business responsibility for cleaning off their sidewalks. Failure to do so will result in one of two things. Either a fine under the bylaw, which I don't particularly think is effective, or the town hiring contractor or individuals to shovel off those sidewalks and the bill will be given to the property owner. Pretty simple and very effective. Just watch me.
Any other discussion, roundtable? No? Okay, moving along, we have two information items. 10.1, Living Spirit United Church. That's a thank you letter for the contribution towards the school supplies that was sent out at the beginning of the year. Um, 10.2 is a, a letter that was received from the minister's office, Public Safety and Emergency Services. I don't know if everyone had a chance to read through that. Um, there is a deadline coming with this for March 1st. Um, so there's lots of questions happening around this letter and what's kind of happening with it. They are going to be putting out information sessions, I think by the end of this week, early next week. So we need to watch for those because we are going to be expected to, um, join a regional or start a regional police committee, right? So, um, within the four, oh, I thought there was something. Within the four regions, I think there's gonna be five to 10 municipalities. So there isn't, I jumped on the ADM workshop or update yesterday just to get some of the information, but there still wasn't a lot. Because I know there was questions around even what if you already have a committee? What if you already have, you know, something happening? Do you still have to join that? They didn't have, you know, the answer for that. But I think that the information sessions that are coming up will hopefully be able to address these. Uh, go ahead, councillor Sheriffs?
So just a question to clarify, because it says communities with population of 15,000 or greater.
And then if you scroll down, it's 15,000 or less.
Oh, there's, okay.
Yeah, so the second page is, um, communities with a population of less than 15,000 under a municipal police service are required to establish a regional police committee through bylaw by March 1st. So that's coming up fairly quick. Um, and then two, if you, if you opt out of doing this, you also can establish your own municipal committee. And that municipal committee, I think is what I'm understanding, is you could get other people to join those as well, right? So we can, but we need to start having those conversations for sure. Uh, Counsel Clerk, did you have a question?
Well, I think there's, it's important to differentiate. One is pertains to municipal police forces. And one pertains to those under the provincial police service agreement, which we fall under, right? So, um, the last bolded portion on page two, um, we will be represented by Alberta municipalities. So there's really nothing, I don't think, for us to do per se.
Oh, yeah, there is. I jumped on the ADM yesterday, um, and they're, they're requiring that all of us have to be part of it.
Yeah, but I think, I think we would fall under, Alberta municipalities. It says the province will appoint up to 15 members to the provincial police advisory board because we would fall under the provincial police service agreement portion of this, right? The other ones are under 15,000 with a municipal police force. Another one is 15,000 and over with a municipal police force. So I think there's a differentiation there and we're, we would fall under the provincial police service agreement group.
Oh, I see what you're saying there.
Yeah. So, yeah, there, like, there would be technically something for us to do, but that would fall under, again, Alberta municipalities.
Yeah, yeah. It'll be interesting when it comes out. Because, yeah, my understanding after, after yesterday's meeting was that, because there was quite a few municipalities on there, that they would get together perhaps and, and form their own regional one.
Right, and, and I mean, the other thing, um, I believe Carol Westerland is probably involved in this on the RMA side, right? So she'd probably have some pretty good info. And she already sits on some provincial RCMP committee.
So the thing though, I guess the question I have with that is, and maybe Pat can help with that. If we're wanting to form our own regional, uh, police committee, are we wanting to stay with, uh, urbans, not rurals? Because rurals are gonna have a completely different view on this because they don't want to pay for policing where, you know, with the changes. And so I guess my concern is with RMA and, and Alberta municipalities, those are gonna be two completely different, yeah.
Madam Mayor, to the Chair to all members of council, my understanding on the regional incorporates both urban and rural municipalities. Otherwise, it wouldn't be regional.
Mm-hmm.
And so we still need to get some further information with regards to moving forward. And I'm sure that's gonna be coming here next little while, probably 1st of January. So we, we've got a couple months to sort these out and to make sure we know what the structure's gonna be and how we should be responding. Just wanna make the one comment is on page three, how will the government ensure alignment? Both municipal and regional police, policing committees are requested to consider provincial policing priorities when setting local ones. So now not only do we have the federal government with their priorities for policing, for RCMP, now we're gonna have the provincial with their priorities. I just have to question, where will our priorities in the whole scheme of things fit into it? And we know that we always think our priorities are the most important in terms of the impact on our own local citizens. So I have some trouble with that particular direction and I'll reserve judgment until we see how things unfold.
Yeah, it's going to be interesting. Counsel McGee?
Just a quick question. Can you remind me that, do we apply for the grant to look at policing?
Sir?
Do we apply for the grant to look at policing?
Yes, I'm very happy to report that we had a teams meeting yesterday afternoon with, uh, members of the province who deal with that. The executive director and also Staff Sergeant Ryan was on the call with ourselves. Uh, our submission meets the requirements. So we're just gonna be going through, uh, have a meeting with the Staff Sergeant next week to finalize the scope of the study. And we'll be submitting it. And we see no reasons why we won't be approved the $30,000 grant.
Right, and that, that ties into this discussion here now.
Yeah, it does, because they did mention yesterday on the meeting that you can use those funds to establish your regional committee as well. It can go towards that. So if we're wanting some of those go to the grant study, some can go here to form it. So, yeah, I guess once those information sessions come out, if somebody gets them before someone else, please share them so then we can jump on and get a little bit more information. Um, so that is it for our information items. If there's no other questions, is there a member of council like to make a motion to accept these as information? Counselor Evans? Uh, all in favor? That is carried. And now can I get a member of council to move us into closed, please? Counsel Clerk, thank you very much.
We'll move that council, or I will make the motion that council move into closed session at 11:14 a.m. in accordance with FOIP Section 172J and Section 173.
Thank you very much for that. All in favor? That is carried.